Okay, good morning, it's ten AM. And I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you everybody for being with us this morning. This is the March twenty fifth, uh, March twenty fifth meeting, uh, I'm sorry.
April.
April eighth, I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting. April eighth meeting, Planning and Commission for the City of Ensign. It's our tradition to be in our meetings with an invitation and a pledge of allegiance. If you'd care to notice, would ask that you stand with us this time.
Father, we're grateful for another opportunity to come before you this morning, Lord, and we ask that your blessings will be upon our meeting as we go about solving the business of our, our city and the place that we call home. And we thank you for that, we ask that you would be with each one here, and it's in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the divine, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, housekeeping this morning, the planning commission is a recommending body, so what I'm saying, uh, that is that the only, uh, cases that we have final discretion on would be site plans and plaques. All other cases will be sent to City Council for final approval on their next meeting, which will be-
April twenty first.
-April twenty first, so I think we have a, I think we have a zone place on here today that will go to, to City Council. We're gonna give you the opportunity on the public hearings to come forward and speak either on behalf of that case or against that case. We'd ask that you would give us your name and address for the record, and, uh, let's see any sense in this holdup, three minute deal today, so we won't worry about that. Okay, that being said, we're gonna move into our agenda, we're gonna go to item three, which is our consent agenda. Uh, is there any, uh, errors or omissions on that, or any reason, pull this from the, pull this from the consent agenda for individuals?
Mr. Chair-
Yes?
-I understand that there was a mistake on item, on the minutes, which is item three A.
Uh-huh.
So the, um, on the color carrying four A, that motion was not unanimous, um, I believe Vice Chair Sylvester's saying-
Yes, ma'am.
-I will make that change on the official record.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, then you said with that correction being addressed and being changed, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll go into item four A, we're gonna open the public hearing, and for sure.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody. Uh, the first item I have for you today is a request for a conditional use permit, uh, to allow for the operation of an office warehouse, uh, used for property that is located, um, in between Ridge Drive and Loy Lake Road. Uh, just for reference, just to the west is, uh, US seventy-five. The applicant is requesting, uh, this conditional use permit for office warehousing, um, to develop co-warehousing spaces, uh, for business entrepreneurs that typically provide services to the community, so think along the lines of your tradesmen, your landscapers, um, individuals that need that warehouse for the storage of their materials or their trucks, um, or equipment, but also need office space for personnel or for, um, the minimal amount of customer interaction that they would have. The applicant is proposing the hours of operation to be from Monday, uh, through Friday, seven AM to six PM, and Saturday, seven AM to twelve PM. Operations will bring, uh, low traffic, uh, during business hours. This is the proposed concept plan, kinda to the, on the left of your screen. There is a residential subdivision adjacent to this property on the east. In fact, everything to the east and to the south is, uh, basically residential. This particular subdivision, um, all the homes do have screening in place, um, however, the applicant is proposing to plant or install additional screening along that shared property line to aid in that visual, uh, buffer for, between the, uh, commercial use and the residential use. Uh, the construction and the articulation of the proposed buildings, uh, will meet the minimum standards listed within the highway-oriented and corridor overlay district. I do believe I forgot to mention that this property is zoned commercial and does fall for the most part within that highway overlay. There is a small portion that is not within that overlay. However, the applicant is, um, going to develop that property in accordance with the development standards listed within the highway overlay. And some of those articulation requirements for the building itself is to, uh, the bay doors cannot face any public right-ofways, and so what they are proposing to do is to face those, uh, bay doors interior to the property and provide, um, just plain facades for those public right-ofways with windows to kinda break up the exterior. The building itself will also, uh, the facade building materials will be compliant with the highway overlay with the masonry requirements. And per the future land use plan, the subject property is to be developed in a mixed commercial manner. Um, the comprehensive plan states that these areas of, as it pertains to mixed commercial, these areas can be developed as business parks, offices, manufacturing, distribution centers, industrial or mixed uses. Um, this use of office warehouse is consistent with the designation of mixed commercial. If I could go back to this one. Uh, the subject property, as I mentioned, lies between, uh, West Ridge Drive and Loy Lake Road, and the proposed layout does provide an entry and exit to both public right-ofways along that driveway, or that drive that you see on the east side of the property. All proposed parking is depicted to be interior to the property, providing ease of travel between both Ridge and Loy Lake Road. And given the design of the development and the low volume of traffic, the development is anticipated to bring, staff does not anticipate any adverse traffic, uh, effects. This is a greenfield project, um, so staff is not imposing or requesting any additional conditions, given the, um, amount of development standards that the development will have to meet, particularly those of the highway overlay, um, landscaping, screening, um, articulation of the building, parking, all of that will have to be met. Um, and there is no, uh, production to take place on site, that's not, um, what the use of an office warehouse would be. Um, in addition to that, uh, open storage is prohibited. So, based off of the, uh, layout of the proposed structures, there is no opportunity for them to have open storage. Open storage has to be screened from all residential zone districts as well as public right-ofways. Uh, given the compliance with the future land use plan and the designation provided by the comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of the request, and I'm present for any questions you may have. And the applicant is here as well.
So you, you'd mentioned that it's all, in, all already zoned commercial, but almost all of it are, some of it is highway overlay?
Yes, so, it's all zoned commercial, and the far southeast corner of the property, it kinda cuts it at an angle, is it, is within the highway overlay, or is outside of the highway overlay, the majority of the property is within that overlay.
But it's all zoned?
Correct. And if I could also say, right now, the property is platted with two lots that front on Ridge Drive, one that fronts on Loy Lake, and in conversations with the applicant, their, uh, intent is to plat that all as one, and then to bring forth, um, site plans for all the buildings, and because of that overlay district requirement, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission will have final action on that site plan.
Any other questions, staff? Is the applicant here? I'm, I'm looking for him.
Good morning, my name is Matthew Bean, and I'm with, uh, MB Studio Architects in Dallas, and I'm representing, uh, Mr. Pushpinder Singh, uh, who is with Nelken, Zell Construction, um, that, that is the applicant for the project.
Any questions of our speaker?
When you talk about low volume traffic, what are you talking about, per day or...?
We, we estimate fifteen to twenty trips per day, uh, depending on how many of those units are occupied, but as a, as a max, uh, we were, we were saying fifteen to twenty of those units would be individual sort of businesses, so we, we figured one to two trips per day.
I have a couple of questions as well. Um, are these units mostly gonna be leased or sold, or kind of a combination?
I think the, from what I, the discussions with the owner, he looks to rent them, so lease them out.
So lease them out. And then also, um, that being said, even if he's planning to lease it out, is he planning to self-manage the property, or, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question regarding the lighting, uh, how intense will that be since this is close to a residential neighborhood?
Right, um, yeah, as far as the lighting is concerned, we'll keep the building lighting basically just as an accent lighting minim, to a minimum. Um, no reason for large parking lot lighting or anything like-
So you don't see floodlights?
No, shouldn't see any sort of major parking lot lighting. It just, it should be all attached to the building. Okay, thank you.
What's gonna be the, uh, we're not gonna have trucks coming in at all hours of the day and night doing deliveries and...
No, we, the owner, since he's part of the construction industry, really foresees this mainly catering to, like, lighting, uh, consultants or lighting companies, plumbers, electricians, things like that. So what, you will see the traffic is, you'll see vans and trucks in the morning as they load their trucks up for the day, and then returning in the afternoon. Maybe one or two cars for the, for the employees in the office parked there during the day.
What's the anticipated number of, say, outside storage vehicles, service vehicles such as vans, service trucks, things like that, that would be, that would remain on the property overnight or during the weekends?
So, I, if we've got, right now we have four buildings with the potential of at least five, um, individual units, so I guess you could say the maximum would be twenty. But depending on what he sa, he may, we, we designed the units as a sort of, you know, one thousand fifteen hundred increments, and so businesses could take over more than just one of those spaces if they need three thousand square feet or, or more. So, that number lowers the larger the business needs to have.
Any other questions? Okay, hang tight, we may have to bring you back for, for both.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? Okay, uh, go ahead, Miss Coffer, come ahead. Ladies first.
All my questions actually may have guarded and answered. We had questions in regards to truck traffic, oops, wrong glasses. Um, what about trash buildup? Is there gonna be-
Well, there'll be dumpsters required, so they'll have to have-
Will they be required to keep it in the dumpster?
Uh, yeah.
Yes. Well, I mean, you see it all, all over, but it doesn't happen.
Well, not only will they have to have dumpsters, but the dumpsters will have to be screened, so you won't see the dumpsters, or you won't see anything around them.
Okay. Okay, let's see, um, you've already answered the question about the hours of operation. We were kind of interested in what did the height that the building's gonna be. Is the screening gonna, actually gonna cover that, or...?
Well, uh, what we're gonna do is, when we get through, I'll, I'll bring the applicant back forward and I'll let him answer those questions for us.
Oh, okay, and, um, you already have answered truck traffic, noise level, um, the only other thing I noticed when you put the picture up on the screen with the screening, um, we're actually that third house off of Loy Lake Road there, and it does not picture any screening available in that area.
So, when it comes to screening, it's not necessarily screening the entire building, it's screening operations, um, so I just wanna make sure that that's understood. You may still see the buildings, I think y'all are at a higher, a tad higher elevation over there, so that, hopefully the trees that they put are of a substantial caliper, so kinda start you on a, a bigger path where they'll branch out and you won't have to see them as much, but, um, this is just a concept plan.
Yeah, they're supposed to say, is that just-
Uh, so that site plan that I mentioned earlier, whenever the applicant is ready to take down the property, um, they will have to submit for a, a formal site plan submittal, uh, showing landscaping, building, parking, um, those dumpster screenings that we were just mentioning, all of that will have to be submitted to staff to review, and then the Planning and Zoning Commission will take action on that as well. If you'll see me after this, I'll let you, I'll give you some advice on how to, like, sign up for the, um, agendas, that way you can see that when it goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so the trees that I'm seeing now aren't necessarily how it will-
Correct, these, this is just a concept plan to kind of aid in what their vision for the office warehouse is going to be developed. Now, this does set a precedent for what staff is expecting to see, so whenever they do submit a formal, um, site plan, given that this was part of their zoning exhibit, if it doesn't look like this, then there'll be other conversations that we have to have. Additionally, if I could help you with this as well, the conditional use permit, once it's approved, or if it's approved by council, gives the applicant six months to either obtain a certificate of occupancy, to start construction, or provide any additional submittals. If none of those are met, or for some reason, staff is not satisfied with what they provided, then ultimately, they would have to come back and do this all over again.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that's really all I had, 'cause you answered most of the questions in the beginning.
Any questions on the speaker?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes?
My name is Colby, you need to come up there?
Yeah, okay.
I have a loud voice, so I didn't figure-
That's fine.
That's fine. Uh, my name is Colby Maury, I live at twenty-eight oh one, South Lillis Lane, which is the corner of South Lillis and Ridge Drive, the last house on the block. Um, the mention of light pollution, the hair salon that is just to the west of there that was built roughly five years ago, um, has minimal, minimal lighting and a parking lot light, and I will tell you, the light pollution from that into the three houses at the end of the block is pretty intense. Thankfully, they have theirs on a system where it goes off usually around ten o'clock at night and comes on somewhere around six to seven in the morning, um, you'll notice it with the time change there. I don't know if that would be something that would be feasible for you guys, considering that's coming, um, a lot closer to these houses. The other problem is, is as South Lillis Lane goes north, it rises in elevation to the end. So my house at the end of the block, I have a six-foot privacy fence, but when I am standing on my back porch, I'm, privacy fence is roughly about right here, as the yard slopes and goes down. So with the screening and just regular drainage at the end of that block there, how everything slopes, when you guys come in to do excavation or whatever, I would like to know what is going to go around that area. Um, when you drive past that, the corner of our lot, the builder actually came in and put in, uh, cross-tire retaining wall there to at least level the yard, because it was a slope, and it, it slopes the entire way down to, to Ridge Drive. Um, so the, the lighting, I'm, I'm, I'm really concerned about the lighting being an issue on top of the traffic. You mentioned one to two trips a day, I don't know if you've ever sat outside a landscaping company, a plumbing company, but those guys are frequently in and out all day long, getting parts, getting things like that. Um, there are a lot of people on that block that work from home, and so that kinda traffic, noise level, things like that during the day, I see, uh, being, being an issue. Um, I just want to state those there for the record. Um, screening, I think, would be the main thing. I would also like to see, um, a plan of what that's gonna look like further down the road, and when you guys do come into excavation, how tall are those buildings gonna be for us that are already at the higher elevation, and if there's gonna be any, the, the depth of the excavation, um, for that plot, because there are the other two businesses there that are kinda, uh, the way that the, the ground rolls is a little bit different. So, just wanted to state that.
Any questions on speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here wanna speak on this case? Yes, sir.
My name is Johnny Smith, three thousand two Loy Lake Road, just have one question. The driveway that connects Loy Lake Road also with the other end there, will that be constantly open, or will it be gated on each end? Speaking from experience, we used to like to try and find places to get out of the side of people, for different reasons, and that would be an ideal place for drug deals and things like that to go down, if they could sneak in there just for a short minute and get out.
Okay, last one. Any questions, um, go ahead, please, let's speak.
Sorry, I'd like to make one more comment on that. The apartment complex that is just to the east of there, on Mr. Smith's point, there is a lot of foot traffic that comes through the field, around the neighborhood, through the neighborhood, windows peeking in cars and things like that, so on that, that note of people coming in through there for illicit activity, since the apartment complex has been built, the, the number of questionable things that have gone on in that area, there's wood straight to the north, so all kinds of stuff going on down there.
Okay, we're gonna bring the applicant back, uh, if you would, to answer the questions concerning the building height, um, the light pollution, uh, screening excavation, and whether or not the entrances will be gated.
So, to address the building heights, we're looking right now at about a twenty-foot building height total, that's to the top of the parapet. Um, and so with respect to neighbors seeing the tops of the building, of course, you know, right, day one, when the, when the trees are planted, given that we plant a four to six inch caliper tree, you probably will see the tops of those, of, of, of the buildings, um, as over time, of course, with the trees grow, we'll, we'll, uh, with the hopes of screening some of that construction. Um, in regards to whether that drive is gated, um, right now, it's, it's planned as a fire lane, um, so as far as I'm, as I know, that cannot be gated, it would have to be, uh, either, I'd have to double check with code, but I don't believe, um...
So, I don't wanna speak for the fire marshal, but if there is a Knox box-
Right.
-lock provided, if that was something that the applicant desired, then I would just through the site plan submittal, we'll, we'll shore that up, but as long as there is access, then, um, then it would be okay.
Okay.
It is CUP, I noted in the package, says that no additional traffic mitigation or control is required.
No, not at this moment, given, um, there was no need for, like, a traffic analysis or anything of that nature, um, because it's not adjacent to a text dot right-of-way. If through the site plan submittal, things, um, or items came up that staff wasn't sure of, we would require that or an estimate, so...
So we have another chance to review?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir. And that will, more or less, sure up what those, how those buildings will operate. Where, we're looking for the zoning for the office warehouse and the tenants that are going in there, unfortunately, we will be restricted to whatever that site plan, um, is, how it's approved, how the civils are approved, so if the property owner winds up leasing it to a more intensive tenant, and they, the traffic counts change, then it ultimately changes the development, so...
Um, with regard to sort of the screening and the lighting, uh, light pollution, again, I, I think we'll do every, uh, everything in our power to sort of reduce the amount of lighting, um, with, with no, again, no tall light posts, um, like you would see in a parking lot. If we need to consider timers, um, you know, for the evenings, um, to reduce that, you know, that certainly will be, but I will say that, that most of the architectural lighting will be facing the streets, the, really, the, the light that is going to be present will be in between the two, uh, two, the two spaces, lighting where the actual work and loading and, and, and cars are going to be. Um, so hopefully, we reduce that, uh, in addition with the screening that kind of separates that away from, uh, the, the residential neighborhood. Um, as far as, you know, grading, I get, you know, that, that does have a grade, uh, a great difference, pretty good diff, great difference from Loy Lake Road all the way up to Rest Ridge, and so although we haven't done the civil plans yet, we will do our best to, um, you know, be with, with respect to the scale of the residential homes and what you're able to view from the side, um, you know, that'll all be a part of that consideration with that.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Do you guys have, uh, yeah, one good question. Um, are you planning in, in your building, your plans, uh, from the owner's perspective, to have an overall security system, or are you putting that on the tenants, or do you not know that at this stage yet?
Um, I don't know that at this stage. Um, I suspect, though, he will want some sort of security system, a part of his buildings, um, just protect his, his personal property.
So you would probably have cameras across the right-ofways-
I think so.
-in the, in the public spaces from the owner?
I think so.
Thank you. Okay, uh, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Annette Cofer, twenty-eight twenty-one, South Lillis Lane. Uh, we had one more question. When you're excav, excavating this, you're, you're digging down, correct? I mean, that's how it's done, you're digging down into the earth. I know-
Either that or building up, one of you two.
Right. Well, uh, as this, this gentleman said, the, the subdivision does kind of have a, a grade. The water runs through our backyard like a roaring river, and it runs right along the back fence, and, uh, I'm just wondering, are you, would a retaining wall be put there to hold the earth together?
Yeah, more, more than likely, there, there'll have to be some sort of retaining wall. I noticed on the concept plan, there shows there could be a small detention pond as well to catch, catch some water, to slow it down. Um, in the future development of this property, should they go to that, to that stage, a drainage grading plan will be required, so civil engineering will come into play, so they're gonna have to take all the hydraulics into consideration, and, and they will address that, um, at that time. Now, I don't know how much it's gonna help your backyard, 'cause your backyard's going this direction-
Right.
-so that water's gonna continue, but, um, they will have to take that into consideration, so basically, your water coming off of your lot onto their property becomes the issue, so...
Right, right.
They, you know, um, and that, there's laws that, that govern that, we won't go into them today, but there are, so, um, but yes, they'll have to address, they'll have to address that. Now, again, I don't think what they're gonna have to do on that particular piece of property is gonna be much of a benefit for you-
Right.
-on your drainage.
Oh, I'm not, that really isn't my, you know, I just wondered if they would be putting some kind of a retaining wall or something there.
More than likely, there'll have to be something there, because of the to, the to, I'm familiar with the topographic lay of that property, and I'm, I can pretty much tell you that there's probably gonna have to be a retaining wall on the east and the west side of that property. So basically, we're gonna cut it down here, and we'll have to build it up over here, so we can level it out, so...
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
One more question, sorry. On, can you tell us what the, the easement is between where you're gonna start and the property line of the residences? I believe, and I, I'm ninety-nine percent positive that our fence line is on the property line, and the builder did that down the entire neighborhood, so if that is the case, and there will be a retaining wall or any type of excavation that has to come out, if that is on the actual property line that we share, will that take away those fences and all that stuff as it comes through?
No, retaining wall will be on their side of the property.
On their side with that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And with respect to the distance, we're keeping forty feet away from-
Forty feet, okay, that's, I was just wor, curious of how far that was from...
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and, uh, I hate to say, I told you so, but how this happened, I don't know, but to take a- But, to take a commercial zoned area and a multifamily zoned area and put a street of SF seven-point-fives right down through the middle of it, is just not good land planning, in my opinion. And that's what's happened. And I understand the concerns from, from the residents, but at the same time, your property butts up to a commercial piece of property. And so, it, it becomes a, it becomes a situation to where, hopefully, the developer is going to be cordial and helpful in trying to reduce the amount of inconvenience that there will be for you guys that are buttoned up to that particular piece of property. Again, I would think maybe if that property had come through now for zoning, we might not allow that to happen the way it did. I don't know. But, I just, I don't feel like it's good land use the way it was laid out, but that, I wasn't here then, so. Anyway, I just wanna make that clear, that we're dealing with residential property budding up directly to commercial property, so we're gonna try to be, hopefully, you guys are gonna try to be as cooperative as possible in trying to make, make it where it's not so much an inconvenience on y'all's day-to-day life and the residential part of it. Okay, any other questions or comments?
My comment would be, given the, as Chairman mentioned, the mixed commercial uses, there are certainly other uses that would likely be more obtrusive than this proposal. So, personally, I don't live in your area, so I understand what you're struggling with, but at the same time, there are probably other uses that you would be less happy with.
I am familiar with the history of this, of this particular property. The original use was to be a roofing supply company, which, there was too much outside storage, so that, that got taken off the table pretty quickly. The next one that was proposed was a convenience store, I think, that he was looking at doing as well. So, there were other uses that were considered that were much more obtrusive than this, than this one. So, I think that this is probably a lesser of evils, so. Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the use of an office warehouse on this subject's property.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a second.
All in favor?
Aye. Hosed. Alright. Moving on to item five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item I have for you is a minor plat, or to take action on a minor plat, creating two lots in the eleven-thirty West Bullock addition. Property fronts on West Bullock Street. And the reason why this minor plat is coming before the commission today is there is a little bit of an oddity with this property. So, on the proposed Lot One, there lies a, an existing single-family dwelling unit. And when this was entirely one property, dwelling unit existed, and then kind of on the southeast corner of the proposed Lot Two is an accessory structure, which at one time was a garage. What the applicant is proposing is to subdivide the property into these two lots, retain the single-family structure that's on Lot One, and then renovate or remodel or bring up to code the existing accessory structure into a single-family dwelling unit that meets the minimum standards for the SF five, or I'm sorry, SF seven-point-five single-family residential zoning district. The proposed lots meet all the plating requirements for this zoning district, lot dimension requirements, lot area requirements. They do have access to water and sewer, and they both run on a public street. And the reason why this plat is coming before you is because of that accessory structure. Per section twenty-eight dot fifty-two dot one, accessory structures are not allowed to be permitted without a main building or a primary use. And so, what this would effectively create is a non-conforming structure by way of the plat. And in understanding what the intent is for the property owner, and in an effort to promote sustainability and redevelopment, staff is bringing this before the commission today to recommend conditionally approving the plat and hold off on filing it so long as a building permit is submitted to the building department that is appropriate for what is needed to bring that accessory structure up to the standards that are listed within that residential zoning district. So, two-car garage, minimum square footage, things of that nature are, is what staff is looking for. And I understand from the applicant's side, not wanting to provide all of, you know, going through engineering and things of that nature at this time, not knowing if the plat could be approved. And so, this was kind of staff's effort in being mindful of that and bringing it before the, and hopefully, before the commission, so that it can be conditionally approved and they can move forward with that building permit, while satisfying our needs of not creating a, a non-conforming use. I hope that makes sense, but please let me know if you have any questions.
So, the, you said their intention is to remodel the existing garage into a full conformant house?
Yes, so, I say remodel, because when I think of an existing structure, obviously, I think of, you're remodeling it. It's possible that they will want to utilize the garage as the garage and build it at addition, yes. And at that point, it would be a new construction permit. Without having those plans and understanding exactly what that layout is going to be, this was staff's option to try and get them to move forward. It does still create kind of a, what's the word, I guess, a risk for them, because we're not filing the plat. So, if they submit a building permit and we review it, and it doesn't meet those development standards, then they have to redo their building permit without a plat being filed still.
Yeah, but I understand their issue. They, they won't have the plat first, and then they take the next step.
Yes.
So, this conditional...
Yes.
Motion that we would approve would help both sides understand, and they would still have to come back?
Correct. They don't necessarily have to come back. We would be able to file it as soon as...
Okay, but the permitting means city...
Yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir. Yes, they will have to provide the permit. The permit would have to be reviewed, and obviously, I'm looking at it strictly just from the zoning side. Other departments would have to review and make sure it's compliant with their requirements. But, if it meets those zoning requirements, then I could move forward with the plat. And luckily, they are retaining the property, not needing to sell it. If they were needing to sell it, then I don't think that staff could move forward with conditionally approving it, given that it creates this non-conformity.
And then, I'm assuming everything on there is compliant with setbacks?
Yes, yes, sir. The applicant has submitted a, kind of a building exhibit, so that we could create, make sure. It's not a part of this agenda, but I reviewed it and made sure that there were no additional non-conforming setbacks or anything of that nature that we were effectively approving as a, a non-conforming.
What, what is the dimension on that flag up there? I can't read it. Is it wide enough that it satisfies the seven-point-five?
Yes, so, it's sixty, it's sixty, so seven-point-five, the minimum width is sixty feet. And then, the minimum depth is a hundred feet, with the overall square footage requirement being seventy-five-hundred.
So, Lot Two definitely meets the criteria for the plat.
And so does Lot One. It has an eighty-four.
You know, the accessory building thing out of the question. These, these are two legal lots, the way they're, the way they're...
Correct, so, yeah, so the, the proposed lots meet the minimum requirements. They have access to water and sewer in front on a public street. The only reason this is being brought before the commission is because of asking for that conditional approval.
Exactly, okay. But, as far as we're concerned, it's a plat that meets the criteria and the technical requirements set forth in the city.
Yes, but plaits couldn't, they cannot create non-conforming, so...
And right now, it's non-conforming.
Yes, sir. So, I just, in an effort to just work with the applicant, this is the solution that I had, to have the Planning and Zoning Commission conditionally approve it pending the building permit being submitted and approved.
I just like, this is the reverse of what I had to do in my life. You guys had to approve for me?
Yes, it is. It's very much reversed. Yep, you already had your main structure and wanting to add the accessory, yep.
Well, there was one there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
It was there.
Yes, 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 yes.
I was laughing.
Okay. Seeing that there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, this is a public hearing? Oh, it isn't. That's not?
It says, it says, "It's a public hearing."
That's my bad. I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
Alright, so we'll open the public hearing. And is there anyone here? Larry, you wanna get up and say something? Okay, seeing there's nobody to speak on behalf of it, let's go ahead and close it and move on. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to conditionally approve the proposed minor plat, with the condition that the building permit is submitted, converting the existing structure located on Lot Two into a single-family dwelling that meets the development standards listed within the SF seven-point-five single-family residential ordinance.
I'll second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hosed. Staff update?
The only update I have for you guys is that last night at the city council meeting, the caliber collision development, or the amendment, I'm sorry, the amendment to the PD for the Rosemary was approved, allowing for what we presented as auto collision repair, tying it back to our ordinance. The use is actually auto body repair and painting. So, that use was allowed, or that amendment for that use was approved, with the condition that the highway overlay development standards were applicable to that development.
Also, let's remember that our next meeting, which is the twentieth, correct?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. We will be doing an after-meeting to discuss design standards for residential uses, correct?
For residential, for, I'm open, I'm open to any discussion that we wanna have. I think that, you know, obviously, we wanna make sure staff doesn't leave with a bunch of spider webs. We have to try and connect back together, but I think any direction gives us direction, right? We can go forth and hopefully, propose some ordinance amendments to those residential zoning districts, and if that's what we wanna touch on first, that sounds great. Please keep in mind, look at your multifamily units, your triplexes, quadplexes. We do not have any standards for trys or quads. So, I'm, I'm really open to anything that you would like to bring to the table, and we've done some research, but hearing from you what your concerns are, what you would like to see, is, it, it really means a lot, so.
Also, I think Mary said we were gonna have lunch?
She did. I will confirm all of that with her when she gets back.
Be prepared, gentlemen, ladies. Alright, seeing no other business for them.
If I could make one comment, I would just note in this public forum that Dennison was one of the three winners for the Greater American Main Street Award, nationally.
I heard this morning that we were number one on the top three.
We were the first one.
We're gonna go with number one. Give us a inch, we'll take a mile.
I think it was alphabetical, but I, we were the first man.
That's their problem. Alright, that's, that's good news. I was glad to hear that, so.
There'll be a celebration on Thursday.
It is, a slack party, so.
Yep. It's a good place to call home, guys. Really is. Alright, seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, move. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten forty-four AM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.